And as I take a look at around the table, there's a lot of legal counsel that's costing a lot of us a lot of money, so we're going to get right at the agenda. I'll officially call the meeting to order for April 26, 2017. We will let the record show that we have four of the five town board members present. Andy Moore is absent this evening, out of town on business. We also have a number of staff members and we have a number of members in the audience. Welcome to everyone. We have the March 22, 2017 minutes for approval and would entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, the minutes will stand approved as written. Lisa, thank you very much. I will just add to the record that while I was absent for that meeting, I did review the minutes and am supportive of those minutes. Okay? Monthly reports, most of the monthly reports are in. There's a couple that we might need to give a little bit of grace to due to some holiday and folks being out of the office, but I would expect all of those will be in and ready for the end of this week. We have no public hearings this evening and we have no guests, so we will move right on to our action items. And our first action item is Okinappal. It's a review of the Planning Board Conservation Board memos. And so it has been a while since this matter was on the agenda for a host of reasons. We had a little bit of wind, we had a little bit of snow, we had a little bit of confusion on the supervisor's part as it related to a holiday, and so now we are here for this work session to discuss three different matters on Okinappal. This first one is again a review of the Planning Board Conservation Board. The Board had asked Mr. Valentine if he would do a summary, if you will, of the site, what's taken place between the Planning Board, the Conservation Board, and then an opportunity for the Board members and our legal team if they have any additional questions, comments, or otherwise. So with that, Mark, if you would just take us through a summary and give us kind of an overview of where we are for everybody's benefit.
Sure. Do you want me to start with the summary? You want me to start on most recently the Board tableed pending the Conservation Board's review of application, or I can roll that kind of into the discussion?
So however that works best, ultimately we'll get all of those items into the record.
Okay. Well, we'll go through the summary first. One of the items Councilman Metzler had asked for was kind of a summary or breakdown of how the plan has changed from where it originally came to this board. I might kind of have some notes, I'll run through those. As it was originally proposed, there was 47 parking spaces on site, showing 34 of those to be land banked. After going through the Planning Board review process, that is now down to 13 parking spaces. Originally, there was a five-acre farmstead designated on site that's been reduced down to a one-acre farmstead on the property, again, working through the Planning Board review process to kind of hone down what the project is. Originally, there was a decorative pond located near the corner of Sweets Corners in Dublin Road. There was some concerns brought up by the public about proximity to the intersection, whether that was safe or not. The applicant subsequently took that off of their plan and just removed that as it wasn't needed. It is below the standards needed for the DEC regulations, any stormwater quality or quantity, they're below that level. One of the other items the Planning Board worked with, the applicant, was to eliminate all impacts to the e-pod areas. We have steep slopes on site as well as a water course e-pod. Originally, they showed some utilities running through a portion of the steep slope e-pod. They subsequently moved the water line over feeding the building so it can wholly be outside of those e-pod areas. They've relocated or moved the farm lane access. Currently, it is on the east, excuse me, southern side of the property. During the public hearing, the immediately adjacent neighbor who's had some concerns about the proximity that farm lane, bringing farm tractor equipment up close to their house, asked the applicant if they could relocate that somewhere else on the site. They did look at a couple of different spots. Sweets Corners had some site distance issues there, so they basically came down to having it on the same location as their entrance drives. The entrance drive comes in and then there's a stub off of that for the farm lane, so you kind of have a main access drive and then a farm lane separate. I believe that satisfied the concerns of the neighbor that was concerned about being so close to their house. There was also some concerns about what the second floor was in the building. We originally received a second floor plan that designated office. It looked like it had more space to do other things in that. The applicant clarified that that was the owner's suite. They do have shower areas in there, but that is a requirement of Ag and Markets law to provide people an opportunity to shower off, clean off, if they're working in those type of areas. There's a small kitchen space area, it's a break room for the employees to use as well as the owner. There was also many conditions that the Planning Board applied to this project that further kind of honed down or refined this project. As it is in an RA2 agricultural district, there are no set hours of operation. Farming can happen as farming needs to happen, but the Planning Board imposed timeframes for the tasting room and one that is open and available. It is limited from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Thursday, 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Friday and Saturday, and 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Sunday during the fall harvest season only for that. So there are restrictions to the hours. The Planning Board reiterated the language of the easement, basically stating that farm operations, the cidery shall be used to make cider only from apples grown on the property, which may be blended with other apples and ingredients from offsite sources in accordance with New York State Ag and Markets law. And there's an area where they dictate how many, how much percent can be used from offsite apples, but the majority needs to be grown on site and used to make their own cider with it. There was further restrictions. There's no outdoor speakers, outdoor live music. All sources of music need to be internal to the cidery. All building-mounted light pole fixtures are dark sky compliant, should not spill onto other neighboring properties. They'll also have light fixtures that will shut off during non-business hours and be motion sensor only, so trying to limit the light impact to neighbors on that. There are some uplights on the trees that are just decorative, you pull in the entrance drive on that, but everything else is dark sky compliant. Condition 28 of the Planning Board resolution limits it that they cannot sell any other, let me just read it so I don't mess it up. "Applicants should not be permitted to conduct tastings of or sell at retail for consumption on or off site or other non-cider alcoholic products such as New York State labeled beer, wine, or liquor manufactured by licensed brewery, licensed farm brewery, licensed winery, or farm licensed winery, and/or licensed distiller or licensed farm distiller." There was a lot of concern by the neighbors that this was going to turn into a bar, they would sell other products through the easement, through New York State Ag and Markets law. We can't restrict it, but the easement, the conservation easement allows the town to restrict it to selling cider-only products at the site. So that is again another area where they've kind of shrunk the project or the potential scope creep of it. And then condition 29, reiterating the easement, no banquet facilities. Party facilities outside storage should be permitted as otherwise provided herein or specified in the easement. So that's kind of the rundown of how the thing has changed, the conditions that the Planning Board imposed to restrict the scope of what this project was.
Okay.
That was item number one of the request.
So before you move on to, yeah, move on to that, you know, questions by the Board at this point on that particular item, or any additional information that might be needed. And Mr. Horowitz and Mr. Wysher, any additional comments you need or would like to make at this time?
I don't, yeah.
All right. Great. And let's move on to item number two, if we could, please.
Yeah. Item number two, we did get an email from one of the neighbors with kind of a matrix chart of items that they brought up. Granted, these are not the items the Planning Board uses as their criteria for review, but just in response to what they had on that, I'll kind of go through those and some visual aids for the Board as well. Number one, they had the item was the 150-foot building setback.
Kind of helpful to share their sketch, I've got two versions. So this first sketch here shows.
So maybe you could just tip that just to the south a little bit. There you go. Thank you very much.
So this shows the project as it was approved by the Planning Board up here. It shows that one acre farmstead around the buildings and the parking lot areas. This shows what that, we've called it the proposed alternative plan. So this was submitted anonymously by a neighbor, shows that alternative option of locating it down here in the lower area. So the first item, and I'll kind of run through each one, the first item talks about the 150-foot setback. So as part of the easement, there's a required 150-foot setback around the whole property to have the project within that. They've showed it down here, they've shown it, so the building is outside the 150-foot setback. Obviously, the parking and other pertinences are not. As the application is shown, it is trying to be centered on the property. I believe it's 280 feet to the nearest property line from any part of the building development. So they've tried to kind of center it in the property, keep it away from the neighbors, try to lessen the impact as possible. This location, I mean, it's right up against the road. As further items I'll get into, there was concerns from the public about the appearance of vehicles and headlights and the visual impact on Dublin Road from that, but the first item talked about the 150-foot setback.
Mark, what was his concern with it? He just said that he just talked about it. What was his?
His comment was just the 150-foot setback, he said that they met that altogether. He said that was their one item that they wholly met was the 150-foot setback. He said that the alternative sketch met that at a minimum. So that was the only.
Mark, can I ask, the alternative sketch, just to make sure we clarify, that is this, it was anonymously submitted, is my understanding correct?
Correct.
And that is not, this is, the alternative down there does not appear to be an engineered drawing, correct?
It's not, and I'll get into the next one. We did, I asked the applicant to provide what their actual layout is and how that sits in the same area. We talk about fire access lanes, building code, things that, you know, why that would need to be more like that. This is kind of a idyllic version, they took the two buildings, put it in, and then just kind of compacted the pavement around it. You know, obviously, it was not engineered design and doesn't take into account rating topography with that, but this was what we had. PRC originally reviewed it, provided comments to the Planning Board. The Planning Board reviewed this option as well and provided comments to this Board in the letter, as well as most recently, the Conservation Board was asked at the last meeting to provide comments to this, and I do have copies of the Conservation Board's memo from that for the Board of Neighbors, but the Conservation Board reviewed this on January 9th and basically concurred with the Planning Board's finding that the proposed location at the top of the hill was the best spot for it, avoiding e-pods and other areas. But the Board, the Board does obviously already have copies of this, but that's just a reminder of that. Second item talked about view sheds. Mr. Mazur said that the alternative location was much better. He said the proposed location greatly diminishes the view sheds on it. He's kind of got three of them, I'll put them all together, view sheds, viewscapes, scenic vistas, I think they can kind of be packed in together. View shed, you can say you're looking from the road to the property. If I look at a scenic vista, it's normally you're looking from the top of a hill off to something, so I was just going to kind of pack those together. He said, obviously, you know, this location was much better, it didn't impact the look of the hill. The Planning Board looked at that. They feel that the cidery structure is designed as a barn, designed as a rural character, look to it. They felt it was keeping with the farm character in the neighborhood, so they don't feel that locating it up there will be any impact to the neighborhood. One of the things, talking about the view shed or the view area, and they're coming as put it down below, you've got more room to plant crops up the top, you can preserve that view shed at the top. Some of the stuff the Planning Board looked at is, this is private property, the public does not have rights to go up there and walk around. Basically, if you locate it down here, plant crops at the top, you're actually losing the view shed or you're losing the scenic vista, the public's opportunity to have views from the top of the hill to look over the land. Obviously, at the applicant's discretion, they're private property, if people want to come up here, enjoy cider, sit out and have views of the surrounding neighborhoods or surrounding area that's scenic vista that actually would be preserved or maintained, we're having it down below, actually takes that vista away from the community and they would not, the public wouldn't have opportunity to view from up there. The next item, he goes into talks about topography. And that's actually my kind of graph, this first one here. And a lot of, we've had a lot of conversation talking about steep slopes, so the steep slope areas in the back, the steep slope area here, and we have a water course e-pod. The water course e-pod is based on a named or numbered stream by DEC. While this is a named stream going this way, so the e-pod comes up into this area, this is still a drainage way. We have another culvert here, so this is a low point, but it's also, not to be conflicting, but it is also a high point. The water in the drainage in this area goes this way, water in the area that goes this way and then drains down into Mr. Wickham's property. So while this is a lower area where water collects, this is still a drainage way through here, so it's not shown as our e-pod, but it is a water course that the water can flow both ways. You can see on this aerial here, you can kind of see it's a dark color that obviously must have water ponding there at the time, and we actually have pictures that were recently taken showing after the recent rainstorms, just the spring that there is ponding water out here right now. So that area in that low section where they're proposing to relocate the building, just from the spring rains that we've had, already has water ponding in it, so.
And it disturbed the natural flow.
It basically blocked that area, so we say while it may technically not be an e-pod, we'll talk about that in the next slide, that with the grading and everything else, it would still be an e-pod, but it is a water course even though it's not shown as an e-pod itself, you can see there's standing water.
It's a delineated area for sure.
Yep. Yep. You can see that in the photos here, and then you can also have a culvert throughout on the site, how much way the water flows unknown, but those are some pictures that were provided showing the water that's on site right now in that drainage way, and that's, you know, a major concern of PRC and the Planning Board is to locate a building in the drainage way. This Board has dedicated a lot of money and resources to keeping drainage open, clear, and flowing, and have done a great job today.
So where he's standing here would be essentially part of the alternatively.
That they're standing where the potential building would, the alternative building proposes the building to be located. Obviously, then we'd need to fill, raise the building, then that changes the drainage in the area, the flow patterns in there. You know, if it stayed wet for a while, now you've got to look at different foundations for the building, whether you've got to go deeper to stabilize with that, so.
Wouldn't that increase the potential area of disturbance too?
Yep. And that kind of moves into the third plan. We had them, you know, provide basically just take the layout up here. This kind of segues into, I think the next item talks about fire department access. Their comment was, it's flat, it's easy to get in right down here, it's less of a slope on the road. Obviously, we've worked with the farm marshal to work on the grade of the road as below our standard we allow, make sure it's H-20 loading, they can get up and down the road. Fine, the fire department is happy with that. We've located a hydrant up to the top so they can pull water in. There's actually another hydrant located here, it's located here, but they're adding a third hydrant. But this plan, and that's why we had the applicant show it, shows the actual turning radius that's needed for trucks, farm equipment, fire trucks to get in and out, where this plan originally didn't show that, so it doesn't show those curved areas, they actually get a fire truck around it. So for the fire department access, that would not be fire compliant, would not be building code compliant for that. Once you see the layout of it, now you can see it's already into the water course e-pod, and then they asked them to add a conceptual filler as we talked about to raise that up. These filler areas or cut areas are now into the steep slope as well as further into the water course e-pod there, and so while that one kind of squished it together and made it look, and it fit neatly between them, an actual layout using the same geometrics and using the turning radiuses that we put turning templates on to make sure we can get a fire truck around it and farm equipment around it would have much of a bigger footprint or a bigger impact at low area, you'd have to fill that to raise it up to get the building out of the wet. You know, you've kind of impacted the one, culvert is right here, and the other plant was in yellow, so the one culvert goes this way, and the other culvert is right over here, so you can see it kind of had an impact on the drainage in that corner as well. We talked about fire department access, his next, the next comment was about vegetation. They said that was best, there was no change. They said that the driveway as proposed here removes a hedge, there is a hedge area down here that would take out, but obviously vegetation on the site is going to have, is going to be planted, it's going to have trees planted for the crops. Mr. Wickham was planting other crops there last year, so vegetation's going to come and go. Obviously, they're going to be planting a lot more, maybe a 530 apple tree proposed at the site, so they'll be adding more vegetation back. This area down here that they're cutting through, that hedgerow is just a farm hedgerow that just wasn't maintained at some point, so it's not a significant stand of trees. There are actually no significant stands of trees on this property, it's been.
And that the Conservation Board didn't note any either?
Okay. It's been agricultural for years, obviously, it was grapes before this, we can all remember the vines going up over the hill, and it's been ag land for a long time, it isn't an ag district, it's also in our RA2 agricultural district with that. Talks about the field access, that's the farm road we talked about earlier, the one, one of the neighbors, you know, asked to have it relocated, it was too close to them. This one says it should remain there and that's the best location for it, it shouldn't be moved, so kind of conflicting comments. This one shows here, this was the stub off, this is their main access drive in and then the stub off for the farm access area, they can go in and access the other areas where, you know, they have the apple trees proposed down below in this area here, and they have apple trees here, but I say, Mr. Wickham was farming the other parts of the property so he can get in and get in with tractor field equipment and whatever crops they plant up there, they can access off of that and stay further away. This actually, I'm sorry, it kind of cuts off, their property line is further over here, so this kind of cuts off the end of that. I can put up a full site plan if that changes or makes a difference, I have a full set over there. Next comment was light and noise. We talked about the dark sky compliant, lights on the building, the shut offs at night. We've talked about the restrictions and outdoor sound, you know, having live music or speakers outside. Agricultural operations are not regulated. We have many farms on three sides, there's farming operations going on now, we don't restrict their hours of doing farm and ag land stuff, and Planning Board didn't impose any restrictions in this one. One of the other items that came up during the public hearing was the neighbors' concerns about having vehicles along Dublin Road and the impact of headlights, cars coming and going at different times of the day. So the applicant actually drove up there with his pickup truck and parked right at the top of the slope. So in one picture, you can see his F-350 truck parked at the top of the slope, and then also kind of the perspective view up that slope. So going up the slope with the vegetation that's there with his truck, you can't see his truck up and over that corner, and that's up here at that front edge, so his truck is parked more in this area. The Planning Board distinctly wanted the parking facing in, so if you pull in headlights, you're facing towards the building, it's not out, so you have just a little bit going out, but also the parking is taken back from that edge, so if you're looking up this angle or this grade here, you're looking well up, you're looking more at the top of the roof of the building, not at the cars right at the edge of the parking lot.
So where's the truck? Is it just over the bend, kind of over the?
The truck is, yeah, it's just right at the top of that edge, so you can sure get on that map. Yep, so the truck is parked just like in this area here, so it's right at the top of that edge, so with this grade coming up, you're looking up and over the truck even at that slope, the parking lot's back here, so you've done plenty of work to move the building, the parking back. So looking at that angle, you can't even see it, it just kind of goes up and over and you're looking beyond, so you may be looking at the roof of the building. If you're right here at Dublin, close, obviously, if you have a further back perspective, you can see more of the building from there. Down here, again, the Planning Board is concerned now you have direct sightlines to cars, to buildings, obviously, tractors, farm operations, kind of the back of house stuff, they'll have apples and all their parties kind of on the back, the public will be on this side here, and then from the street view, you know, all that will be kind of hidden out behind the barns.
As I recall, the Planning Board was looking for that information that's on this pictures because they were, they were really considering where to put the parking and if they should put the parking behind the building, but then they were, you know, I remember, they just, you know, they had it up on the screen and this actually, you know, you couldn't see it in the diagram, so that was part of what they were looking at.
And then the last two items were e-pods, one and two. It states there was, the alternative location is better, the construction water runoff would not impact steep slopes and steep e-pod areas, the water runoff could be directed to the south to a potential pond location. So again, we kind of have conflicting comments, some public had concerns about a pond, they proposed one for irrigation originally, taken it off, you know, being responsive to the public comments, concerns. The e-pods, obviously, we've kind of ran through the water course, the steep slope e-pods on that, we don't have any wetlands, we don't have any woodlands on the site, so we're not impacting those as well on that. So that was kind of the Mr. Mazur's checklist, I say now the Planning Board's item for those items that he had concern about that PRC weighed in on. Any questions on those items? Okay. And then the third item was expressed some concerns about the potential for pesticides or runoff from the property. Obviously, it's been farmland for many, many years, they've used pesticides in the past, but locating the trees, they're proposing the trees down in the front area here confines it there rather than having, basically, they said having it down here and having the apples up on the top was better. PRC actually kind of thinks conversely, having it down here, it's more sheltered. If you are spraying apple trees, they will be required by New York State to be licensed. To spray the apple trees, it's kind of confined down here. If you're spraying trees at the top of the hill, you have much more potential for it to blow over, the wind to pick it, and then, you know, runoff from the top of the hill or down here is kind of in a low fly area, it doesn't have steep slopes with that. I think there was also concerns about erosion and runoff. Obviously, again, we've kind of centered in here, staying away from all the steep slope areas. We will require a letter of credit, we require erosion control on the site, we'll monitor during construction, and then obviously, we're also asking a property maintenance agreement from them as well, so going forward, they maintain the property and if we notice any erosion on the site, we can trust it with them. So those were the three items that we've kind of gone through and looked to highlight on that. I don't know if the Board has any additional questions, concerns about the farmstead location. I do have the PRC memo that does support the proposed location by the applicant at the top. The Planning Board obviously approved it in that location, and then most recently, it was sent back to the Conservation Board to look at that and to.
They all agree.
We in on that, and they agreed as well.
Okay. Mark, thank you very much. Pete, Dick, any, anything that you think Mark may have missed that is pertinent to this particular application?
Mark rarely misses anything, so I think you might have.
Excellent. All right. Great. Board, any additional comments for Mark or Dick, Pete, as it relates to comments from PRC, comments from Planning Board, comments from Conservation Board at this point?
I would just offer to disagree with the Conservation Board that they certainly, even though they're advisory board, they certainly took a hard look at this again and, as their memo indicates, somewhat unusual for a project, but certainly very thorough. They had released two reports, one in February and then one in August of 2016, and then upon this Board's instruction, they listed the specific, the placement of the farmstead, which is the issue that's before us tonight. And I was there for their discussion, and certainly they are experienced in their role regarding environmental concerns, and they touched upon several of the concerns that Mark touched upon as well tonight. So I would just for the record add that the memo to us from the Conservation Board in summary states, "We believe the proposed plan ensures that environmentally sensitive areas are protected, view sheds are preserved with minimal grading, neighbors are buffered from visual and noise pollution, and the agricultural nature of the area is preserved." And I would agree with them, especially because I was there for their discussion. I think that their weighing in is a very important part of this project because of the environmental factors that came into play, and I would, I would support their conclusion as well.
Okay. So I'll ask the Board, so on this particular item, this is farmstead location, I'd ask the Board, any additional questions or comments, either for staff or our two town attorneys? Okay. So at this point, what I'm looking for would be for a vote for supporting the farmstead location at this location, consistent with a recommendation for both Planning Board and Conservation Board.
Yes.
Very supportive of that? Okay, so we'll let them actually reflect that for. Okay, so we'll let them just reflect that for eyes for supporting the farmstead location. That will, that will bring to a closure item number one under action items. Continuing on with Oak and Apple, item B. And so before I move on, I, I apologize, I've slipped in my duties. We, we have item C, which is permit requirements for fences. That item has been withdrawn, so I don't think anybody was here for that. And again, I just want to make sure that that, that discussion with Mr. La Magna as it related to fence location, that's, that was withdrawn and will be taken up on May 10th. So continuing on with our agenda, item B, Oak and Apple. There are two components to this. One is with regards to out of district sewer user, and then two sidewalks. And Mark, I'll ask that you address the sewer, out of district sewer agreement component first, and then any discussion, comments the board might have with that. Thank you.
Yep. Kind of pull up a sewer map of the area highlighted or checked off their property thirteen eighty...
And again, Mark, if you could just maybe tip that to the south just a little bit so that anybody in the audience has the opportunity, thank you.
I'll try to scan out of the way. So they're partially located at thirteen eighty-one. Our closest sewer is down here in Dublin Road. It's a town dedicated sewer. We have easements out to the road. They are proposing to install town dedicated sewer to their side of the road, and then they would bring it up into their property, you know, with a service, to service their building. As this is installed, we've requested they install it deep enough so that these properties on the east side of the road, as well as showing the west side of the road, that currently don't have sanitary sewer access, would have future access to those locations.
And that's consistent with our, with our current policy?
Yep. As they're extending it on, that they would install it, so they would be dedicating this portion of it to the town. And then this would allow, you know, other proprietors to tie into that. These proprietors could petition the town to upgrade a newer sewer district. Currently, they'd be an out of district user here. We have sewer districts created through this area here. We could come back if these neighbors wanted to be part of that, petition the town board and then create a new sewer district for these properties, and then, you know, they would have rights of access to that sewer maintenance.
Okay. Questions on out of district user status?
Mark, that first property, not the large one on the north, or the north, yeah, that one. Is there any, is that a residential property? Is there any, any one there? Not that one, the one just north of it, that one?
This, this is probably owned by...
But that's all the same?
Bill Wickham owns that.
Okay, two parcels, but same open?
Same, same owner. We've actually obtained easements from him to, to locate the sewer, not right in the drainage ditch along the side of the road. He's supportive of this, he's granted easements for this piece. We already had easement, a town dedicated easement up to here. We've obtained easements from Mr. Wickham for both of those properties to locate the sewer in that area.
So it's only one property owner that has to be impacted? I'm sure someone has spoken with that property owner that this is a possibility?
Yep.
I think he's given, he's granted...
He's granted easements, he's, he's well aware of the project, well aware of the sewer installation. He's granted easements for the sewer to be installed, and obviously, it's a future betterment to him that, you know, he has publicly dedicated sewer on his property. He could have a connection to it. That, that cost is being borne by the applicant.
There's nothing unusual or different about this that from our, our standard practice, which we set out of district users, I don't, I certainly support this.
Okay. All right. Seeing no further questions as it relates to out of, out of district user status, let's move on to the sidewalks, please.
Sidewalks, again, I added a little asterisk onto the map of where the, it was located, provided up the map that Mr. Quinn likes, showing our sidewalk locations throughout the town. We reviewed this...
I roll my eyes at Mark. I see that.
We've obviously reviewed this at PRC as well as the planning board as well. The closest sidewalk is here on Dublin Road or here on Route 250. We do have some potential for development up 250, but currently, obviously, have nothing east of 250 in this area. We have nothing on Dublin Road until you get to the far south end. So we're more than half to three quarters of a mile from the closest sidewalk in the area.
Absolutely fine.
Okay. So the planning board thought that kept the rural character with, without sidewalks?
So it would be the standard, we'd receive an easement and then...
The waiver fee.
The waiver fee for, for that, consistent with what we do at other properties, typically east of Route 250.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll package together on item B, out of district user and sidewalk waiver, both of those supported by the board?
Yes.
And we'll let that reflect, you know, in our minutes, that, that is a four oh vote for that. And Mark, you've got some work to do, the out of district user via a resolution to the town board.
Yep.
And you'll put that, put that in that piece of business will be taken care of as well.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
Great, great job, Mark, in responding to my, my concerns as, as you summar, in part of your summary, there were certainly some residents who approached me that had some misconception or confusion about what the project, how it had evolved, and some of their concerns were alleviated when they were told that certain items were not going to be part of the project. So it was important, I think, to show that chronologically...
We tried to post a lot online, the planning board resolution is online, so if people do have questions about the items they went through tonight of specific, specific conditions, that is on the website. We've kept that up so they can review those documents.
Thank you. All right, and then Mr. Horowitz, Mr. Boishar, you have some, some work as it relates to working with the applicant's attorney as it relates to the easement update modification?
Yes. One administrative thing that will be required would be a resolution from the town board authorizing the supervisor to sign an amendment to the conservation easement approving the location of the farmstead. And we will get with the applicant's attorney and work on that important detail.
Okay. So looking for a resolution that would be available before the town board at, at the next regular legislative session?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Try to get that...
That would be on May 3rd?
Right.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you to everyone. Thank you, staff. Thank you, attorneys. Thank you applicants for all of the materials and discussion. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Again, a reminder, item C, Ron La Magna, permit requirements for fences. That item has been withdrawn, and there will be discussion on that next, May 10th, 2017. We'll move on to item D, the star of the show, Mr. Valentine. This is 2000 Empire Boulevard directional signage in town sanitary sewer easement.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Ms. Vignani is here tonight representing...
Welcome.
Thank you.
Representing the applicant. And a couple of handout items that she provided. So there should be three items. One is a kind of an overall site plan showing the property, the additions that they've done out there. The second item shows the different setback locations that they're trying to fit. And then the third item shows the actual sign that they're looking to put on the property. So the overall site plan, this is 2000 Empire Boulevard.
Thank you.
Medical office building. There is also another medical office, but then located behind it. They're looking for some directional signage that is allowed by our code. Worked with Andy Sevagius for it, that directs people to the building in the back. So this is kind of on the southeast side of Empire Boulevard. The photo, and I don't know if you want to jump it and take over from...
No, you're doing, you're doing...
Going astray.
No, not at all.
Based, based on our setbacks, we have a required 20-foot front setback for any sign, as well as 10-foot from any traveling. So that kind of puts them down, if you're looking at this plan that's highlighted in red and yellow, puts them down in the tiny little spot is where they can actually locate the sign. The only spot it puts it over is, is not over the sanitary main, but it puts it in the sanitary sewer easement. We've talked to our sewer department, sewer department said...
So is this basically that, you know, we, we give permission, and then if something happens that we need to get in there, then there's the...
Pick up their sign?
Yeah, the sewer department has no concern, they can pick up the sign. So basically, they're asking for a hold harmless agreement to locate the sign within our sanitary sewer easement. The sewer department had no concern about this being an impediment, maintaining our sewers, getting access to the sewers. If we did have to dig it up, obviously, the sign is easily removed and...
And the sign location is where you think it's optimum for someone to directional and avoiding people looking for where?
Yeah, I, I do. I mean, we could go a little bit closer to the road, but I think the urgency is timing for the back building tenants, you know, and then I'd have to go for variance, of course, if I want to get closer with that setback. So I think, I think this location is just fine, and I think it's close enough to the road to allow, to allow people to see it, yeah.
And it meets everything from a overall square footage for the property, Mark, as you had indicated?
Yep.
Yeah, and it's, it's fine with that. This location, obviously, it just needed a hold harmless from the town board.
Sure.
If you, if they were to look, to move it closer to the road, as Mr. Johnny stated, they'd obviously have to go to the zoning board and go for variance to locate it closer to the road. So I think they're trying to move ahead with this in a quicker time frame.
Yeah, that's fine, I can play with it.
So everybody's comfortable with that? So that will receive support by the board, and then we will have a resolution for that item as well, for permitting a sign within the easement itself. And we're able to do that for the third as well.
We'll put that in for Friday.
All right. Good. All right. Any additional questions, comments?
No, that's it. So I mean, as soon as I get the green light, I'll start, having the signage company start fabricating that, because, I mean, like I said, the sooner the better, so.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you, Mark.
All right, we'll move on to item E and easement abandonment at Four Crown Point. And again, the star of the show, Mr. Valentine.
Getting a few more visual aids for this whole works. Taking care of it from trees tonight.
You're getting them all back, Mark.
I got one more that I stick to the good end. Thank you. Take me longer to hand out the papers than it is to plan what's going on. So the first one, aerial photo shows kind of a blue area along the back of Four Crown Point Drive that backs up to our regional pond. So Plank Road, State Road is across the way. We developed a regional pond that was between Crown Point and Wyndham Woods. Wyndham Woods was not yet complete when we approved, the planning board approved Crown Point. So this blue swath along the back was kind of a hedge, is whether we needed a bigger pond area to take additional space on that. So now that the pond is in Wyndham Woods, we acquired an additional four acres from their development. It actually went as a town board application, as a incentive zoning application. Part of their incentive was that four acres right up along the road that allowed us to expand that pond, install that regional pond, as you can kind of see in there. Now I'm not making that piece in the back no longer needed. They're selling off, the Model Four was the model for Crown Point, they're selling it off, new homeowners moving in. He said, "I want to install a fence. Can I install a fence in the back?" Originally, I said, "Well, you need a hold harmless agreement." And then as we looked at it, said, "Why not just abandon the easement altogether? You know, if we don't need it, why do a hold harmless agreement for an easement that's, that's no longer needed?" So they prepared a map and description, I just took the excerpt, that's the part in the yellow on the second sheet, showing the portion of that to be abandoned in there. So that would, we'd work on the abandonment to take that out since it's not needed. There were some other easements that, not to tie things up, we had to negotiate a couple other easements for sidewalks. If you look at the property, there's kind of an odd little chicanet at the top originally that was town-owned property. We transferred that back to the owner because, again, we didn't need that additional right of way in the area. Beyond town-owned property, we don't need an easement for sidewalks, transferring it back to them. We missed that part of it to get that easement. So in this, we're doing a cleanup, we're taking that easement, they've offered it up. So we're taking the sidewalk easement. That's not an action needed by this board, but can be abandoned, that storm sewer, additional storm sewer areas.
Are we doing six and eight as well?
We'll follow up with, it'll be a portion of six and a portion of eight.
Right.
Because the main comes down through here.
Yeah.
This is the main sewer trunk line. So four is just looking to close, so I kind of expedited four.
Okay.
We'll follow up with six and eight. I have to contact the homeowners and talk to them, and I don't see why they would be opposed to abandoning that. Four is just trying to close as, as quick as they can and want to get the stuff wrapped up. And we want to get the easements filed before they close and make sure that they're tied to the property.
So, so in the interest of good government, is the board comfortable with not only moving forward with four?
Yeah.
But on the portion of six and eight, once Mark reaches out if...
Yes.
I just will do a resolution, but the board's already had the conversation.
We'll do that and go from there?
Yeah.
All good? Okay. Mark, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, we have no informational items. On held items, I would just ask our quick reflect in the minutes that item F, public golf course, more tournament extension, that that be removed from held. That matter, obviously, was discussed and a resolution was passed by this board, but you always like to have a, you know, a log or a flow, you know, when things are, are either added or subtracted from an agenda. So we'll just let the ministry reflect that due to the resolution by the board in March. This matter, I can come off the held item. There being no further business before the board this evening. The April 26 work session will stand adjourned at 7:46 PM. Thank you, Lisa, thank you, staff. And have a very nice...